And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of The Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Central Maine CATV's coverage of today's council meeting is sponsored by The Meadows at Fieldstone Landing located at 40 Shores Road, Waterville, Maine. Give them a call at 859-1966, or visit them online at fieldstonelanding.com.
Good evening. Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody would like an agenda, they are in the plastic sleeve towards the back. But before we get started, I'd like to ask our chairman to please stand and lead us into pledge.
Mayor, I'm going to ask Gus, our nine-year-old person here tonight, to lead us.
Wonderful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up on our meeting is community notes. Community notes is a time where if anybody has something they would like to say, speak about, tell us about, that is not on the current agenda now, that we won't be discussing later, now would be the time to do so. Please just let us know who you are and where you live, and we'll start with you, Mr. Lewis.
I'm Ori Lessing. I live in Ward Three. Full disclosure, Madeline Love with Representative Ward Three. And today I'm representing the Maine International Film Festival. I'm the board president of the Maine International Film Festival. I am incredibly proud and incredibly grateful for the community of Waterville, for the support of this festival. I was very telling on the first night when I gave the opening remarks, and I asked people to stand who had attended all 20 festivals, and there was this core group that just stood up, and many of them were citizens that I see walking the streets of Waterville. The businesses were incredibly gracious and provided extra service, and, you know, I looked through the festival catalog, and just the number of sponsors of local businesses in Waterville was incredibly heartening. Camden Bank threw a special reception for one of our guest speakers. And when I talked to the filmmakers, they said this is unlike any other festival. Unlike other places, I can sit and talk to people about movies, and I don't have to worry about being hounded. The questions that were asked during Q and As were incredibly smart and incredibly insightful. And people commented that this was like a special community, something they don't have in big cities and places like LA and New York for those festivals. So I just want to express my appreciation to the community, to the city, for allowing us to put on this really special, wonderful, magical film festival. And I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Scott McEnroe. I'm here representing the Waterville Community Land Trust. I'm on the Board of Directors, I'm the Secretary for the Board of Directors, and I'd just like to come and give you kind of a little update on what's been happening in the land trust. As you know, we have 181 Water Street, which is still for sale. If you want any information on the price, or even you want to go look at the house, it's listed under Century 21, Surratt, Surratt, and just call and ask for Jill Hewitt, she's our agent. We're in the process where we bought, getting 132 Water Street, and the plan is to actually develop a small little pocket park there where the property, the house sits now. And on Sunday, August 20th, at 2:00 PM, at 181 Water, we are planning on holding a community meeting where anybody's invited, if they want to come down to discuss the plans, if you want to see, you know, input of how you want to see the park developed and used. We're also in the process right now of doing interviews for a part-time employee, which will be doing membership and development for us. In July, we actually recently just joined the Chamber of Commerce, which is good news, which is good for us, to give us more avenue to advertise. Also, I just wanted to ask, any questions, comments about from the council or anybody?
Could you just repeat the address of the home?
Which one?
The one for sale.
The one for sale is 181 Water Street. Like I said, it's listed under Century 21, Surratt, just ask for Jill Hewitt, she's the agent, and she can, you know, either show you the house, or guide you through the process of the criteria, you know, because there's certain criteria you have to meet because of the land trust, but she can guide you all through that.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else for community notes?
Yeah, Julian Payne, Ward Five. I would just like to congratulate everyone who was re-elected to their seat, and all the newcomers. I believe Dr. Tate was re-elected, and Sidney Mayeau re-elected, nominated for their party.
For caucus.
For caucus, yeah. I'm ahead of the game here. And we had Chris Rankort, a newcomer, win for the Democrats, and Bob Hussey, Republican? Win for the Republican Party, and it was exciting to see, and I think it'll be exciting times. And of course, Nathaniel White was also re-elected for his Democrat Party, so it was exciting to be part of that, and good democracy. Thank you.
A lot of good things going on tonight. It's nice, refreshing to hear, and I'm going to add to that. This evening, I'm Paula Raymond, by the way, from Ward Seven. This evening, I want to acknowledge the work of two Kobe students who have spent their entire summer, truly, working with me on projects that the Quality of Life Committee from the Senate Organization put forth to complete this year. These two young ladies, under the direction of their professor at the Anthropology Department, were tasked with performing activities that I assigned them over a period of 10 weeks. These activities included mapping Waterville, archiving historic houses, researching the security of the neighborhood, assisting with the beautification of a neighborhood, and housing issues facing the elderly. They put in 70 hours a week, so over a period of 10 weeks, that's 700 hours. We looked at abandoned property inspection survey, we did a couple of surveys, we researched, prepared, and presented a format to begin the creation of a rental registration agreement. We cleaned up the museum on the streets, and there were 10 of them. We researched and grafted existing housing stock using tax records, foreclosure processes, current homes for sale. We graphed the above information for future access and presentations. They attended city council meetings, and they're here this evening. They volunteered their time at the annual Center Summer Picnic. They're going to do the cotton candy. That's a pretty messy project, but I didn't tell them. So, and our boss said that I could tell them what to do, so that worked really well. They've transcribed, and this is a tremendous historical gift, they transcribed 35 French-Canadian tapes from '75 and '76. We have eight reel-to-reels that are from that same time period that we will be sending to have put into DVDs. We're going to be presenting them to the Waterville Public Library, the Reddington Museum, and Kobe as a gift for having them. And we have a young lady doing that for us. We're in the process of transferring the tapes and the reels. Okay. I want to introduce our city council members, our mayor and our city administrators, along with our citizens here this evening, Carolyn Jones and Emily Dolan, their third-year Kobe students who have worked with me for the 70 hours a week until August 11th. I have them, then I have to give them up. That's a hard thing to do. So, I don't want to, but they'll be leaving for their studies again. And the other thing we want to do, we are working on a community, I can't think of it, vegetable garden, the Moore Street Gardens, and the vegetables are coming in, and part of, we earned a grant, and part of that grant is sharing the produce from there. So today, they came to my home, and we made baked stuffed zucchini, which we ate. We shared with my husband, and then we did six loaves of zucchini bread. I brought them here. It's not been a big seller, but that's okay. People have gluten issues and don't eat sweet issues, and so, you know, but it's delicious. But we also wanted to present to our mayor a basket of our current produce that we have, along with a full zucchini bread for his family. And so if Carolyn would come up and do that.
My need is to hide behind tonight.
And I know we're not supposed to applaud anymore, because that was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago.
This is good stuff.
And that's exactly right. So I did want to ask your permission, Mr. Mayor, and if you would lead us in an applause for these young ladies who really have dedicated all this time with me.
Please stand up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So anybody else for community notes?
Eric Thomas, Ward Seven. I just want to remind everybody that the Waterville Rocks Concert Series starts this Friday. It's the first of four free concerts that'll be happening in the square this summer. It kicks off at 5:30, the music starts at 6, goes until 8 o'clock. It's family-friendly, and there'll also be a beer garden this year for those of you who like to drink in public. Hope to see you all there.
I just want to thank the city employees and everybody who was involved in getting MIF off the ground and through a fabulous 20th year. It's amazing to see so many people from away here having a good time, and I really appreciate the fact that there's a tremendous, tremendous amount of volunteer help that goes into that, and the town looks great. So, good for Waterville. And secondly, good for Waterville, I watched Sarah Sugden and Eve Sitiro at the award ceremony in Washington for Waterville, one of 10 libraries in the nation, to get an award for the work that they're doing, and the fact that we have an amazing library in this town, I think, is something that we don't pay much attention to, and we just kind of take for granted. So I think that Sarah Sugden deserves an amazing amount of gratitude from all of us.
Anybody else for community notes?
I got one more. Just an announcement that the 13th Annual South End Festival will be on August 1st, that it's coming up real soon, and you'll be able to check out more of the produce that Paul and her students have been growing, as well as other family fun activities, games, barbecue. I'm sure the chief will be there, helping us out with burgers. Thank you.
Yeah, right.
5 to 7 on August 1st.
And finally, I have something to say, Lauren Lessing, Ward Three. We had a great debate at the last city council meeting about civility, and we ended that lengthy discussion with a vote, a unanimous vote, to reaffirm our commitment to Robert's Rules of Order, which governs public meetings, including the city council of Waterville. And so I passed out just a quick sheet highlighting some of those rules that relate to the maintenance of order decorum and civility. And if you, I don't have enough for everyone, because I was mentally trying to calculate the number of chairs, so share. It's a first step in civility, share. Thank you.
Is there anyone that's going to have any conflicts with any of tonight's votes?
Yes. I have a conflict of interest with Resolution 114207, which involves me, so I won't be voting on that.
All right. We will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to move Resolutions 115, 116, and Order 117 ahead of the unfinished business.
And can you just let everyone know why we're doing that?
Because these are relatively easy resolutions for us to vote on in lieu of what's to be discussed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, we'll take those out of order. And those are going before Resolution 114, is that right, Mike? So those are correct. All right, so we're going to move right into new business. Patty, we're going to start with Resolution 115, 2017.
A resolution providing for approval of an option for city property landfill. Be resolved by the Waterville City Council, acting as municipal officers, that the attached community options be approved for the city's closed landfill and for the former Runser property, both located on the Web Road, to allow GIZOS Energy LLC the opportunity to study the sites for a possible solar project.
Move to adopt. Second.
Discussion.
If I could just give you some quick background information, over the last year, we've had, well, two, especially two companies approached the city about a large-scale solar project at our landfill. Probably the best possible use of a landfill you could ever think of, right? So we formed a team, interviewed both companies that were interested in our site, and we are here tonight to make a recommendation to the city council to go with GIZOS, who, they are a main base company with a lot of experience in solar development. And what we're asking the council tonight to do is to approve an option, which would give them a period of up to 15 months to develop a plan to develop a solar array at our landfill. So it's still, in some ways, very conceptual, very theoretical. They have a lot of work to do on the site to make sure that it can work there, and that they have a place to sell the power. So this is just the first step in that process. So the option is something that they would have an exclusive use of at our site for, as I said, a period of up to 15 months. Bob Patton is here tonight, in the event there are any questions. Certainly at some point, we're going to ask Bob and his team to come back and put on a much more formal presentation of what it is they do and how they do it. But for right now, it's important that, well, we're saying it's important that the council approve this option, because in the next two days, right, Bob, your proposal is due to allow another state to buy clean energy through that project. So I'm happy to answer questions from the council first.
I'd just like to point out and especially thank Greg Brown and Garvin Donigan from the Central Maine Growth Council. As much as this is coming up tonight on the agenda, this is the kind of process that actually takes a year or more, and that's how long these guys have been involved in this, in discussing it with us in the city, and bridging that gap, and making this come together, and working with our hopeful partners here. So thank you very much. It's a lot of work, this isn't something that just popped on the agenda tonight. It's been a long road to get a really good project going like this.
I'll just make the comment, couldn't think of a better use of the landfill area. I mean, we have a vacant piece of land that honestly could not generate any revenue other than a proposal like this. So commend the work of Garvin and Greg, great job, and excited to see this project move forward.
Same thing that my council over here said is, this is an economic shot in the arm, again, in an area that is, needs to be looked at as far as development, and with the trapped road exchange, and now with this project, this is very positive news for the city of Waterville. We have so much bright light in every peripheral edge of the city.
Not by intended on this one.
Including the downtown, and so we have a lot to be proud of, and big thanks to Garvin, the Central Maine Growth Council, the negotiating team, and making this project a reality. So we'd like to see this get off the ground and really be going full tilt.
Is there any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All right, we will go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor? Okay, and I'm going to scoot over here, we're actually going to sign this now, and give it to our new partner, because he has a deadline to meet.
Resolution 116, 2017, a resolution providing for referral to the planning board. Be resolved by the Waterville City Council, acting as municipal officers, that in accordance with Article 7, Section 7.1 of the zoning ordinance, a proposal to amend the zoning map is hereby referred to the planning board for public hearing and recommendation.
Motion to adopt?
Subsumed.
Second.
I think as many of you know, this is just the first step in a process that involves the question about rezoning. Always come to the council first, the council refers it to the planning board, these folks, next go to the planning board, work out the project with them, eventually comes back to you for approval of the zoning change, so we're happy to assist you along the way. I don't know if any questions from the council?
299 Main Street, where am I? I'm trying to figure out where that is.
I'll let, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Dan Nichols, I'm a member of the Kennebec Valley Credit Union Board of Directors. 299 Main Street, if you were to come off the second exit of the turnpike, go past, I think it's called the Atrium Hotel, start to go down the little dip, it'll be right on the left, is that your first, I think it's your first intersection. There's a church, a brick church on the right-hand side, so we're kitty-corner from that church.
Any other questions from the council? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any questions from the public? Take a vote. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Order 117, 2017.
An order providing for sale of city property, 19 Summer Street. Be hereby ordered by the Waterville City Council, acting as municipal officers, that the property located at 19 Summer Street be sold to Donald Zaltzberg, according to the terms and conditions on the attached purchase and sale agreement.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We've discussed this property a number of times, it has come back to you tonight as an order, because the prior items that we had on the agenda, we're not in the form of an order. The only way the council can, city, can sell land is through an order, requires two votes. This is the first one tonight.
Any discussion, question? Any from the public?
Paula Raymond again, Ward Seven. When I spoke a few weeks ago about 19 Summer and the work of South End Neighborhood Association, what I neglected to realize is that a lot of you are new on the board and on the city council, and we do have an improvement program that was established several years ago, so there would be no reason for you to know what that is. And so I thought it was remiss of me not to at least offer you that paperwork, so that you would understand what our mission and our vision is. And so tonight, I'd like to present that to each of you, so that you each have a copy, can bring it with your folders every time that we come to a city council meeting, and you'll have a better understanding of the years of work that they've put into trying to improve, and working to improve the South End neighborhood. And so I just wanted to present that to you this evening. This is only part of the whole piece, but this was pulled out so that it would be more specific to all of us who are working toward those goals.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for a vote for Order 117. All those in favor? Opposed? There are six in favor, one opposed.
If I could ask the council's indulgence on maybe moving forward on one other item, it's Resolution, I'm sorry, is it Order 111, under Unfinished Business, 232 Water Street?
While you do that, I'm going to actually just grab some chairs, because we have chairs stacked, and there's people in really uncomfortable positions and standing and stuff. Okay, and there are some seats available in the middle here too, but I want to make sure.
So, Councilor Mayeau, would you mind making a motion to move item 111? Order 111?
Motion made to move Order 111-2017 to do business.
Move to adopt. I'm a second, I'm a second.
Everybody all okay?
Yeah. Okay. Is everyone in favor of moving that order to the out-of-order? They can have a vote.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is a piece of property we've talked about a number of times, 232 Water Street. It's a property that was donated to the South End Neighborhood Association, actually to the city. And we're very interested in turning it over to the Waterville Community Land Trust. City will demolish the building, fill in, sell a hole, and then turn the property over to the land trust. All partners, I think, are in agreement on that, so I thought this was something quickly we could do, and then move on.
Do we have a motion to put on the floor, actually? Move to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Great.
Move to read by title online.
Thank you. An order providing for sale of city property.
Move to adopt.
Second. Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions that I could answer?
No, but just real quickly, we meant to say that, I meant to say that I would be abstaining from voting on this, as I'm on board.
And I as well. Apologies for the oversight.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any questions from the public?
Like I had mentioned before, Scott McEnroe, Waterville Community Land Trust, this is the actual property that the land trust is getting, that we're going to develop into the little pocket park down on Water Street. This is where, they said this will be the property when August 20th, at the community discussion for ideas, but just to let you know that, yeah, this is the actual property you're voting on tonight will be where the little pocket park is going to go. So that's, just to let you know, that's what the land trust's actual intentions with the property is going to be.
And will you be maintaining the property?
Yeah, once we acquire it, we will maintain it, we'll, as I said, make sure it's capped up, and that's part of our, as a property owner, we will.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Is this a sufficient deal? We'll call already? The final?
Oh, this isn't, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Go ahead.
Councilor Soule?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Lessing?
Yes.
Councilor Mayeau?
Yes.
Councilor Champagne?
Yes.
Who is five in favor and zero?
Okay, so we are on to Resolution 114, and this is kind of a unique resolution. This is actually something that is specific to the members of the city council and not the mayor, and so I will be stepping away, and Chairman Soule will be assuming the podium.
Shall I read it?
On reading. Let Steve go ahead.
Yes, could you please read it, Bert?
Resolution 114, 2017. A resolution regarding complaints under Article 4 of City Charter, to see what action the council wishes to take, if any, regarding a complaint that the councillor from Ward Three is in violation of the city charter.
from Ward 3 is in violation of the city charter, Article 4 Code of Ethics, Section 4C, and as further explained in the attached complaint.
Okay, because this is something.
We have a motion to move it.
Move to adopt.
Second, thank you.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Because this is something new to us, I'm going to explain the process that we will use tonight. Okay? The individuals making the complaint will state the facts that they believe support their complaint. The individuals making the complaint may then be questioned by counselors. City Attorney, Mr. Bill Lee, may have some questions as well. The counselor will then be given the opportunity to respond to any factual assertions. Counselors can then ask questions. Mr. Lee may have questions of the counselor. Once the complainants have stated their initial position, this is strictly a council proceeding. So the general public cannot and will not offer comments. Again, this is strictly a council proceeding. All counselors may ask legal questions or for guidance from Mr. Lee at any time during this proceeding. After the process has been completed, the council can decide the matter based on the evidence presented. Do we have any questions? Then we are ready to begin. If the complainants would like to come forward?
Chris Rancourt, Ward 4. This conflict is not about legality, nor is this about our weak city charter and ineffective code of ethics policy. This issue is about ethics and the perception of our city government. We have the utmost respect for school teachers and have numerous friends who are teachers. However, this issue is not about teachers, nor is this issue about integrity. This issue is about the appearance of financial conflict and improprieties resulting from conflict. Teachers or their spouse who work outside of the Waterville school system have no financial conflicts with this budget because their employment incomes and health benefits are not dependent from the decisions made by the Waterville city counselors, who are the final authoritative body voting on the Waterville city council school budget. If Counsel Lessing's spouse worked as a teacher outside of the Waterville school system, such as Augusta or Oakland, there would be no appearance of conflict because his employment salary and health benefits would not be dependent on the decisions made by Counsel Lessing, his spouse. An article in the Morning Sentinel dated March 14th quoted Mr. Haley as saying, and I quote, "Waterville schools employ 340 people and nearly 80% of the school budget is represented by salaries and benefits. So that is really the only place where budget cuts can be made," end quote. Another Morning Sentinel article dated March 22nd quoted Mr. Haley as saying, and I quote, "To make further cuts in the school budget, positions would have to be eliminated," end quote. In a Morning Sentinel article dated April 25th, Counselor Tate asked what the proposed 1.07 million dollar increase represents. Mr. Haley responded that a 3% salary increase was included along with a 6.5 increase toward medical insurance. We are here to present Counsel Lessing's words, actions, and the final, and the financial context that gives the appearance of strong bias. According to the Maine Municipal Association, and I quote, "The intensity of a municipal officer's bias cannot really be known unless the municipal officer has said or done things that make it clear," end quote. Per the Morning Sentinel, and I quote, Lessing said in a phone interview Friday that she attended the meeting after her husband Yuri, a teacher at the Albert Hall School, got an email from a representative of the teachers' union. According to Marion Webster, a labor union is an organization of workers formed for the purpose of advancing its members' interests in respects to wages, benefits, and working conditions, end quote. Unions are not a child, children's advocacy group. The appearance of conflict is deeply disturbing. Per the Maine Municipal Association, and I quote, "As a practical matter, the municipal officer should abstain from the quasi judicial proceeding if there is in the public's eye the appearance of strong bias," end quote. Counselor Lessing is the only counselor who admittedly attended this meeting after receiving an email from her spouse's union representative. May I remind you that the meeting was initiated to solicit monies, tax dollars, for the department employing her spouse, and that her spouse's union rep was also a guest speaker. Given the appearance, her spouse's union is not only sharing the resources, but is also calling the shots. The meeting sponsors have on their website, and I quote, "The city needs to look at other ways to either generate more money or cut the budget elsewhere," end quote. The meeting's purpose was to increase departmental budget of the counselor's spouse, thus reducing the likelihood of his layoff and increasing the likelihood of her spouse getting a raise. Money is what should be claimed on his taxes or both if filed jointly. Principles before party. Without ethical principles, we stand for nothing. To restore faith in our government and to avoid feeding this rigged system, we can no longer allow counselors embroiled in the appearance of financial conflicts the ability to vote on the budget if our city's integrity is to be restored. With the evidence presented, strong bias is evident. At minimum, an abstention from the vote is a must. I am sure her spouse's union disagrees with this assessment, along with a special group, interest group I mentioned earlier, which is further testament that this financial conflict is real, valid, and a budget killer. Thank you.
Okay. Do any of the counselors have any questions for Mr. Rancourt?
Could you clarify who the union rep was who spoke at this meeting?
I do not remember this time.
Okay, because I was at that meeting and I do not believe there was a union rep that spoke publicly at the meeting. There may have been a union rep present who was speaking to people, but I do not believe there was a union rep on the list of guests, of speakers. So I would like you to clarify that statement, please.
I do not remember the individual's name, but like I said, as quoted in the Morning Sentinel by Counsel Lessing, she attended the meeting after her spouse's union rep emailed him to attend this meeting.
You just stated that one of the guest speakers was a union rep representing her husband. That is factually incorrect, is it not?
I was at this meeting.
I know, so give us the name of the person and we can clarify this because I was at the meeting as well.
I do not remember the individual's name.
And there was no union rep speaking publicly at the meeting.
Any other questions? Ms. Lee, do you have any questions?
Not right now.
The second complainant?
Hello, Gary Mayhew, Ward 5. At the April 25 budget meeting, a question asking why the hall school closure wasn't being implemented ASAP was asked. Mr. Haley responded, but his points were not convincing. Counselor Lessing, whose spouse is employed in the Waterville school system and works at the hall school, quickly and surprisingly injected herself into this line item. She stated publicly, from her seat on council, and I quote, "Again, Eric, just to clarify, that actually wind up costing money for the next two years, correct, to close the hall school?" End quote. With the school board and administration present, her, her statement screamed the appearance of intimidation, impropriety, and prejudicial bias. She was the only counselor who publicly used their council seat to defend the delay in closing the hall school where her spouse is employed. What was being said behind closed doors? On the flip side, the Morning Sentinel said this about Counselor Sewell, and I quote, "Sewell asks if a plan to explore the possibility of closing the hall school could result in the school closing in September." End quote. Do you see the contrast? Lessing wanted to delay closure and Sewell appeared open to the idea of closing hall by September. Counselor Sewell has no personal financial stake, but Counselor Lessing's spouse is employed at the hall school, and this was a line item issue. At the June 20 council meeting, Mr. Payne exposed misrepresentations in per pupil expenditures. Rather than thank Mr. Payne, Counselor Lessing introduced an illegal resolution according to the attending city attorney. Her resolution placed greater restrictions on free speech, making it more difficult for residents to expose additional erroneous budgetary statistics, further protecting the department employing her spouse. If she was not bound by prejudicial biases, why was she the only counselor to introduce this illegal resolution two weeks after a resident exposed inaccurate data from the school system, data used as a main argument for increasing school funding? The appearance of impropriety and conflict screams. Of course, the resolution was packaged as an attempt to stop personal attacks, which by her definition is the mentioning of someone's name. Residents were not convinced, but were left wondering, was Counselor Lessing being coached? If so, by who? Doubt has been cast and a dark moral cloud hovers over this year's budget vote. Earlier this year, counselors Lessing and Tate recused themselves from all votes involving Colby, not because they lacked integrity, but because of the appearance of conflict involving employment incomes claimed on income taxes. Counselor Champagne recused himself from voting on the front street parking space lease due to his employer's use of the parking space. Counselor White recused himself from voting on the acceptance of grant funds due to his work as a Winslow firefighter with Chief LaFontaine as his fire chief. Today, we are talking about a $40 million city and school budget, which has far greater significance than the simple budgetary line items which warranted recusals earlier this year. Per the Maine Municipal Association, and I quote, "This does not mean that a municipal officer can never express his own personal or political feelings, but when those feelings will control his ability to make a decision in a specific case, it is better to abstain," end quote. We believe three smoking guns have been presented as evidence that illustrate strong bias, which is controlling her decision-making ability, favoring the department employing her spouse. If today's vote is predictable and not controversial, her conflict could remain hidden under the radar. However, if objectives clash and the vote becomes controversial, this conflict will strike the community like a lightning bolt, visible by everyone. To assure, it's time to remember your roles of office and put your personal friendships aside. To assure residents that the budgeting process is no longer rigged, the appearance of financial conflicts must be eradicated from council chambers. With our flawed city charter and weak code of ethics policy, this year's recusal precedent is our only hope in reestablishing faith in the budgeting process. Look at Counselor Lessing's words, actions, and personal financial stake in the budget and at minimum, ask for a full recusal from the budget vote. Only then will council integrity be reestablished. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Mayhew?
Can I ask questions or am I, like, out of, I think I have a chance to.
Yes, now it's your turn.
It's my turn?
Yep.
Mr. Mayhew, are you familiar with, with what tenure means?
Yes, I am.
So my, so my husband has tenure, which means, just to clarify what that means, it means that the hall school could close or it could remain open, but his job is in no way on the line in that decision, nor is his job on the line because of pay cuts. Because tenure means he has job security regardless of those things.
Okay, can I ask questions?
No, you were given your opportunity to speak.
Okay.
And also, may I ask one more question? Did you get a chance, Mr. Mayhew, to read the copy of the excerpts from Robert's Rules that I left on the chair?
Before the meeting? No, I did not. But I have read Robert's Rules and it's my understanding that it is very confusing at times and.
Can be, which is one of the reasons why I read a couple texts clarifying Robert's Rules, one of which is generally accepted by town councils like this one. It's, it's by a man named Dave Rosenberg. And I can read you both the text from Robert's Rules and Rosenberg's clarification. I'm gonna skip the text from Robert's Rules, although it is on the page because as you say, it's long and complicated, but it includes the text.
Can I interrupt just for a second, please?
Sure, sure.
I mean, I don't think you really need to do that. I mean, because, you know, if your intent is, is to say that she needs to be dismissed because she had personal gain, we don't really need to go over that limit unless you'd like to.
Oh, no, no, I was just gonna point out that, that the resolution I introduced at the last city council meeting was dropped because it overlapped point for point with, with texts that are already in Robert's Rules of Order, which we ended the meeting by resolving to recommit to. And that includes the line that personal attacks and accusations are always out of order, including, it's not the man, but the measure that is the subject of the debate. And finally, the assembly has a right to eject anyone from its place of meeting if they don't conform to rules of civility. Does anybody else have questions?
I'd like to just ask Mr. Rancourt and Mr. Mayhew a question. Do you understand that the school department is a separate legal entity?
Yes, yes, we do.
And that the city is not party to their contracts? I mean, we have nothing to do, the city council has nothing to do with teacher contracts. Do you understand that, both of you?
Yes, we understand that the city council has full authority over budgeting the school budget. And in essence, that determines the raises for Counsel Lessing's spouse, along with the chance for layoff. We do understand that, yes.
Sorry, but I don't think that was the question. The question is.
That is incorrect.
The question is, do you understand that the city is not party to.
Yes.
Teacher contracts?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Rancourt, you, you understand that? Yeah, okay. Also, it says in here that, you know, in the charter, it says, what is the operation improvement or repair or contract to which the city is a party from the charter? So what are you referring to? I mean, because in our present charter, that's the, that's the quote.
I'm referring to the MMA guidelines, the appearance of conflict. And, you know, I think the fact that Counselor Lessing referenced us back to Robert's Rules was an indication that it was trying, she was trying to deflect the issue from the appearance of financial conflict involving employment incomes. And I think that was a smoke screen. And as far as the.
Point of order, is that a factual statement or is that conjecture?
Uh.
Factual or?
It's factual as far as I'm concerned, yes.
Point of order.
And, and, one thing that is factual is the attending attorney.
Point of order, she was addressing your statement, but you brought up about her motion. So you.
Can you let Gary speak, please? Thank you.
One thing that is factual is the attorney that attended the meeting on July 5th did admit that her resolution was illegal, that it violated First Amendment rights, which was an example of an extreme measure, which would be symptomatic of someone bound by prejudicial biases that was trying to silence the public from further erroneous budgetary statistics. And, and I have it right on the end of the pamphlets. You can look at the video when the lawyer was asked. It was illegal.
Counsel, would this be a good time for us to get guidance from Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
The precise question before you is whether Counselor Lessing should be removed from office under Article 6, Section 2 of the Charter. And the specific language that authorizes the removal deals with any alteration, improvement, or repair or contract to which the city is a party. And no counselor or no, no employee of the city is supposed to receive any benefit directly or indirectly by reason of any alteration, improvement, or repair under authority of the city or contract to which the city is a party. And it's very specific language. And I guess the question that I have is, since that is what the complaint has been, it's Article 6, Subsection 2, what is the alteration, improvement, or repair, or contract to which the city is a party, that Counselor Lessing. or repair, or contract to which the city is a party that Counselor Lessing is benefiting from? That's what is not, from what I've heard so far here today, that's not clear to me. And it needs to be clear to the council because that is what they have to consider. This is the only provision in the Charter that can, that allows for the removal of a counselor, which of course is a fairly drastic matter when you consider that the voters put the counselor in office. So, and that is the precise language, and I do not know how, based on the facts so far that I've heard, and there may be other facts, that's what I'm asking for, that her conduct would fit within that Charter provision. And Mr. Mayhew or Mr. Rancourt, I believe you both have made essentially the same complaint. For either of them to address the council on that point, I think would be helpful.
Our approach was on the city charter, and as you know, the city charter is rather vague, does not protect the city from the devastating effects from the appearance of conflict, and that is the section in the city charter we looked at, was the conflict of interest portion. Our angle strictly is from the appearance of conflict, and that we're asking for a full abstention from today's vote because the appearance could not be any greater. You people have recused yourself for items that were far less than a $40 million city budget, $22 million school budget. So that is our angle, is asking for a full recusal.
So now you're asking for recusal, but you originally wanted her removed from the city, is that correct?
We asked, we looked at the city charter, and it appeared that there was a violation due to the conflict of interest, yes. And that's our angle, appearance of conflict of interest, and we quote MMA Guidelines and their recommendations, that they advise communities in order to protect the community's integrity. And this is what we're talking about, the integrity of the city of Waterville.
So you want us to vote on something else now? You don't want her removed, you just want her recused?
That's what we're asking, is at minimum, a full recusal based on the evidence we presented, using her actions, words, and financial context. Yes, that's correct.
So are we comfortable on voting on the original complaint right now, then?
Yes.
I just want to make a comment. You know, based on the information that Mr. Mayhew and Mr. Rancourt have brought forward, I mean, clearly, at least I don't feel, given the advice that Mr. Lee had just given, there's sufficient evidence to really move forward with removing Ms. Lessing from office. However, I think some of the points that were made were valid in regards to the appearance of conflict of interest, you know, and as you mentioned before, you know, there were some votes that I had taken a part of, or not taken a part of, I had abstained because of employee connection. I might not have gotten a financial gain from that, but there was certainly an appearance of conflict of interest. So my suggestion for Ms. Lessing would be to recuse, at least on the school portion of the budget, the city side, I see no conflict, but to just put this to bed, I would strongly recommend that Ms. Lessing recuse herself from the school budget.
Because I have a procedural question that I...
Mr. Mayhew is going to speak.
Oh, sorry.
Lauren, when we first became councilor, I went out to meet you, and as a rookie councilor, and we, I met you on your turf at Colby College. We had a very avid discussion. We have a lot of mutual interests, and we have only minor disagreements. I think both you and your husband represent a lot of good in the community. The things that have been presented ever since, this has been quite a process, because we've seen this coming and going, and then it's come back again with this charter violation. I feel, you know, definitely it's no grounds for removal. I think that's a, I think that's a very drastic allegation to enforce that type of thing. I do believe that, as Counselor Champagne said, that there may be, and we've all recused ourselves of different things, I've recused myself of a contract with the city with Sharon Williams, because my own brother is the main sales representative for Sharon Williams in the state of Maine. So, you know, there's been Colby initiatives that councils on this have recused themselves. There's been a number of things that we can talk about, perception, and appearance, and advantage, those are the three words that, you know, I really take out of this whole format and in context of what they really are. And there is perception, that there is some of that to gain, or some of that as influence. I have self-preservation, if I was in your seat, I would probably, you know, put the perception to rest by probably recusing the part of the school budget on your behalf. That's only my recommendation, I can't speak for you, and I don't want to speak for you. I'm just saying that is observation and recommendation I probably would take if I was in your seat. Other than that, I think this proceeding, you know, needs to, you know, come to a quick end.
Should we have a vote?
Should I, can I just say two things quickly? I would say first, that I ran in November on a platform, I ran against a gentleman, perfectly honorable young man, whose platform was reducing property taxes at all costs. I ran on a platform of growth, growing the tax base by keeping infrastructure strong and investing in Waterville, including its schools, and I was elected by 80% of the voters in my ward. I should say that I also walked with my husband, who was a teacher, he walked with me. So everyone knows I'm married to Uri, Uri is better known in town than I am. I also, I also cleared, you know, I wondered if this would be considered a conflict of interest, so I spoke to Bill Lee at the outset, he assured me that it was not a concern, but I wasn't satisfied with just that. I wrote to the Legal Services Department of the Maine Municipal Association. I received the following notice on May 31st, "You asked if being married or related to a public school teacher employed by the council of the municipal school district and voting on the municipal budget," which included the school budget presents the appearance of a conflict of interest. Maine law, this is a quote from the respondent, "Maine law does not prohibit a council from being married to an employee of a municipal school district." And then they go on to say that the conflict of interest clause was really intended for entirely different situations. So I cleared it with Bill Lee, I cleared it with the Maine Municipal Association, I was honest with the people in my ward, and again, elected with 80% of the voters there. I think it would be a gross betrayal of their trust to step away from supporting their interests in this situation.
We aren't clapping at these meetings, remember? Thank you. Would we like to have a vote then? Yes, move the vote.
What's the specific of the vote?
Can we clarify what, for motion, with the motion?
Mr. Lee, could you help us with the specifics on the vote?
Yes, okay. All you have done so far is put a discussion item on the agenda, because it wasn't clear which way the council would wish to go on this proposal to remove a counselor. But that has been the request that was made through the city clerk, and it was passed on to the council. To take a procedural step here, someone would have to move to remove Counselor Lessing from office for violation of Article 6, Roman 6, Section 2 of the city charter. If there is no motion, or if there is a motion to that effect, and there is no second to that motion, under either situation, the matter dies there, because there is, there has been no showing of support for it. So that is the position you're in right now, where I believe the council should be asked, is there a counselor who is willing to make a motion that Counselor Lessing be removed for violation of Article 6, Section 2?
Okay. Is there that motion that someone wants to make on the council? Then this is over.
Okay, and if you would like, since the issue has been brought up as to whether or not Counselor Lessing can participate in the budgetary process, I can address that if you wish, even though it's not a separate agenda item, we've certainly been discussing it.
Is there anybody that has a concern about him discussing it?
Clarification, ma'am?
I would like to hear that.
Thank you.
Yes. The city charter defines the necessary qualifications to be a city counselor, and one of them is, for example, that you cannot simultaneously serve as an employee of the city. There is no such restriction on being an employee, or counselor being an employee of the school district, and likewise, there is no prohibition on one being a counselor if one's spouse is an employee of the school district. And it has been suggested, and I understand the reasoning process, that some people feel that there is a financial connection, even though the council doesn't decide where the money the school department receives is spent, it does get to decide the total amount. But the fact is, the charter does not make that distinction. We have had, over the, I've experienced with the city going back over three decades, hate to admit that, and there have been numerous instances where counselors have sat with spouses who are employed by the school district. We've actually had people who have worked for the school district who have sat as city counselors. Whether they should or not is not a question you can decide here tonight. It has been suggested that even though there is not such a prohibition within the charter for a spouse of a counselor to be able to participate in the budgetary process, that there is, there's that appearance of a conflict, so that if you're going to sit as a counselor, you should not partake in the budgetary process. And you can't really split it, you can't say, "I'm going to participate in the municipal side, but not the school side." When you vote for the budget, you vote for the, for the whole thing. We do not vote for a school portion, and then vote for a municipal portion, or vice versa. It is all or nothing. I've been asked whether it would be legal to not have a counselor vote, or force a counselor not to vote, or participate in the budgetary process, because that counselor's spouse is employed either full or part-time by the Waterville School Department. If you, the most, far and away, the most important function that you have as a city counselor is participating in the budgetary process. We're talking, yeah, I've heard, yeah, it's $40 million, and of course, it's not just an up or down vote. How long have you been working on the budget here? Last three, four months? You actually can start with some preliminary meetings back in January. If you were to say that someone can be a counselor, but they can't participate in the budgetary process, then, then really, you're only a counselor in name only, and you've effectively removed that person's authority and power as a counselor, and I don't think that that is legal. Having said that, if people wish to disqualify someone from serving as a counselor because that person or that person's spouse, and I think if you're going to do that, you'd also need to say registered domestic partner, okay, because of the same financial type of connection, that would need to be done by a charter amendment. And while Ms. Lessing, the MMA correctly told you, there is no prohibition in Maine law against your being able to vote and participate in the budgetary process, if the charter were amended, then there would be a provision under Maine law that would so prohibit it from happening, and that would have the effect, if it were to be passed, and a charter amendment goes out to the voters, the entire city gets to vote on that language to decide whether or not it wishes to see it happen. If that were adopted, I've been questioned on this, I do believe it would be legal. You do get into a First Amendment analysis to some degree, because you're taking away some people's right to be able to run for political office, and other people's right to be able to vote for that person. But because there is that type of a financial connection, if the voters were to pass such an amendment, and I were called on to defend it because it was challenged in court, I think that the city would prevail. I think if you were to take it another step further and start including other classes of relatives, I think the financial connection becomes more remote, the infringement upon First Amendment rights becomes greater. So if in fact, there were going to be a proposal to amend the charter, I think it would need to, from a legal standpoint, be very narrowly drawn, but at the present time, there is no such prohibition. The charter has been through revisions, which means completely looked at and rewritten on multiple occasions, and up to this point, there has never been any language proposed to say, if your spouse, if you or your spouse are employed by a school district, you cannot serve on the council. The charter can be amended to state that, but that is something that would have to go to the voters at an election, and the voters themselves would decide. So from a, from a legal standpoint, at the present time, Counselor Lessing can vote on the budget. If the voters wish to change that for a, at some point in the future, because it'd have to be an election, it would have to be passed, and then it would not go into effect until the beginning of the fiscal year following its passage, then that procedure can be followed. But right now, where we are right now, there is no prohibition, legal prohibition, on a city counselor who has a spouse employed full or part-time by the Waterville School Department from participating and voting on the combined municipal school budget.
Any other questions or discussions?
No, it's pretty clear cut.
Okay. We'll turn this back over to the mayor, then?
All right. I believe we are at...
We're at Order 106.
We are at Order 106, I guess.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
A board provides for appropriation of municipal and school operating budgets for the period of July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, and Mike, you've got a couple of things to hand out?
I do. Brightly colored, there's a purpose for that. So I actually, when it gets to the end, the extra copies, if we can put them on that empty chair there, people can help themselves, but I better take one for myself.
Can I have one for Mike?
And I guess Patty needs one too.
He's only sitting on the desk.
I think he was looking for...
Yeah.
Good eyes.
The council's ready, Mike.
I'm sorry?
The council's ready for you to speak.
Good, thank you. As Bill Lee said, this is something we have been working on since February, at least. This is the order for the city budget. So the order that you have in front of you tonight contains the original numbers from my budget to you back in April. So you can disregard those numbers in the order, because what we're hoping to do is come back a week from tonight with new numbers in the order as a result of what you decide tonight. And so, what you decide tonight, I think we can, we tried to summarize in two options. The green is something that we discussed individually last week regarding additions, deletions from the budget, and so that green sheet represents a budget that would require a mil rate increase of half a mil. The Waterville purple color represents a budget that includes the most recent requests from the school department for an additional $75,000. So that's the purple sheet, and that bottom-line request is for a mil rate increase of .63, not .53, .63. And so, I think a lot of you are familiar with the additions and subtractions that went into the budget. We're certainly willing to go over those items with you. So I guess I'd like to stop there and ask for questions going forward.
Well, we should probably, well, I guess we've already had it read. Before we get too deep into conversation, first, we need to have a motion to adopt.
It's actually been moved to adopt and seconded, so it's on the floor.
Okay. So, the original one?
The original one, correct.
The original, okay. What I'm going to pass out now, the list that we circulated last week with additions, deletions, and so on.
Mike, and I just want to say, we say last week, but this has actually been a pro- Mike, and I just want to say, we say last week, but this has actually been a process that has gone on for several months.
Oh, yes.
And I think one thing that we can all be fairly proud of is that, I think what we discovered at the end of last year and through the process this year, is that the days of having a couple of people sit at finance committee and come in and present the numbers are probably not the best way to do things. And we had a great process where we brought individually, every counselor at some point came in to meet with either myself and Mike, or, or Mike and Steve. And one of the things we really worked to accomplish was that everybody got to come this time and say, "Here are our non-negotiable items." And I think it's probably actually been the, the most involved, the entire council has been in helping create what is ultimately their budget. And I do want to just say before we start, I want to thank all of the counselors. I want to thank Mike and Heather, and I want to thank Eric and his team, and Paula's not here, but certainly Paula too, who have made themselves available throughout the process and have stayed in touch with Mike and I to continue to work through these numbers. So, and, and I, one of the things that we were able to do, just a good example, is one of the things that ended up getting cut from the school budget was $33,000 for the school resource officer. Wonderfully, this entire group here said, "Boy, that's really important, and we would hate to not have that position here." And the city actually agreed to take that into our budget. There was one-time funds set aside for several years of capital improvements, so we don't hit a huge fiscal cliff again next year, and hopefully, we won't have these enormous impasses. So it was a great process, and I just want to commend everybody that was involved in that, that's here tonight. That's all I have to say on that. So what we'll need is a motion to adopt one of these proposals, and then I guess we'll have council discussion, and then we can open it up to public discussion. Does somebody have a motion to move one of these?
Motion to adopt a green resolution for .53 mil rate increase.
Second.
Okay, so now this is on the floor for discussion.
Could I just go over some of the revenue sources that we've used?
Yes.
Just so people understand.
And if you could explain where some of the one-time funds are matched to specific things, which was a little bit different than in the past.
Right, right. Well, the budget, whether it's going to be a half mil increase or a little bit more, is relying on certain revenue sources that may not all be here a year from now. A good example is the amount of money that we're proposing to use from the PERC refund, the landfill, Penobscot Energy Recovery landfill, we've been at for almost 30 years now, 29. We've built up a reserve account, we're getting money back from that project, and so that is plugged into the budget as one-time money, which won't all be here a year from now. So that's one thing we have to think about.
Mike, I just want to interrupt how you're saying that, because we've kind of done that in the past.
Oh, yes.
But the way we've done it is to try to almost supplement our mil rate. I think the difference is this year, we actually went to Mark and said, "Mark, what do you, what are your needs for the next several years for capital projects?" We have one-time funds, because on the city side, most of our increase was actually capital improvement needs. A lot of them much delayed, some equipment going back to the 1980s that we still have. And so the purpose is to match those one-time funds with really long-term purchases, so that next year, the need will not be there, along with the revenue not being there. So that, that's what creates it, so there won't be that big gap in the city's budget next year.
Thank you, exactly. Because if you look at the green sheet, you'll see in the, probably one, two, three, four, five, six line down, the amount of 116,500 leftover bond funds. And then the next line is, when I was talking about the PERC money, put those two together, it's a little, $1 million. Those are one-time monies, but we're applying them to one-time expenses, as the mayor explained, because we have about a million dollars' worth of capital improvements, equipment purchases. While paving is in this category, that's not a one-time thing, you hope to do paving every year, but anyway, certainly a capital improvement. So a number of equipment purchases at a one-time, so that's very, very important. Some of our one-time money is directly going to capital improvements. We've using some surplus, but I think a very moderate amount of surplus, 300, well, actually 380 plus 400 is 780,000. The city's surplus position is, has been really pretty good, not what it used to be five years ago, when our state funding was reduced, but it's still at an acceptable level. So with a half-mil increase, many of you that are homeowners will actually see a decrease in your tax bill because of the increase in the homestead exemption approved by the state of Maine. So that, homestead exemption?
Which I just want to point out, during this process, every time we thought we got to a great point, we just got hit with another punch to the gut. And last-minute changes to the homestead are a great example, where the, the state actually decided to change what they said originally they were going to reimburse the city for. We had actually got to a better position than this in the budget, and then the state changed that, so instead of having an increase in valuation, we had a decrease in valuation. So every time you hear the state government come and say that they're offering property tax relief, it's really not true. It's going to get paid for somewhere. So I just wanted to point that out, and then, sorry to interrupt, Mike.
No, because we had a lot of calls today at the office because people read the newspaper and I think incorrectly interpreted that the mil rate would be going down .8. No. Your tax bill, the effect on your bill, if you're a homeowner, if you're not a homeowner, then this doesn't apply to you, but if you're a homeowner under the homestead exemption, your tax bill will go down because even though there's a half-mil increase in the rate, there's 1.3 decrease in, yep, okay, as a result of the homestead. So the net effect is a .8 decrease in your tax bill, not in the tax rate, but the tax bill, because your valuation's been reduced. And I hope that's, I'm glad to answer any questions, but it's not the mil rate that's going down .8, it's your bill, if you're a homeowner. So there are a number of other changes, pluses and minuses. Are there questions from the council on individual ones?
All right, I'll just point out, filming of council meetings is back on this original proposal. We've put that back on the docket, so we're not going to go through that process this year. I know it was kind of confusing, so glad to see that back.
Any other questions or commentary from the council?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a general comment. In regards to the, the compromise that we have come together over the past six months to come together to, put together this particular number before us, we've had a number of back and forths. You may have heard me in the past, you know, explaining my displeasure with, with regards to how we're getting revenue, or how we're not cutting certain things. But quite honestly, I think this is one that we all put our heads together on. I'm proud of that, I really am, and I think that that is something that we should seriously consider tonight. This half-mil increase in the, in the valuation, excuse me, half a mil increase on, on the taxes will effectively, as Mike said, be a reduction in tax bills for residential homeowners. However, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we have many businesses in town too that are going to be seeing a hike of a half a mil. So any further increase in this, I would be against. I think half a mil is a, is a moderate increase, something that, you know, with compromise, I'm willing to accept. There's a few items of this budget that I, I'm not in agreement with, particularly in regards to the PERC reserve funds. You may have heard me speak on that a few meetings back. I think the city should save it. However, given its use and the application of those funds towards capital improvements, I think is a smart move, and I commend Mike and Mayor Isgro for putting that together. I think that's a viable compromise to, to solve our budget problem, and I'm willing to accept a half-mil increase and no more.
A couple of things I want to point out. This is, really, this is really why, this is the most important meeting of our tenure as city councils, and, you know, it's a climatic time of every city council within this chamber to have this day come annually, to ultimately vote on an annual municipal budget that best serves the interests and current condition of our constituents. By no measure should any of you take this vote lightly, as it can and will define your character and image amongst your peers, and more importantly, your constituents that elected you to serve them in the most sincere and thoughtful manner you can muster. The compromise has been achieved at the state level after a three-day shutdown of that government. Compromise today is here amongst counselors and with residents seeking improved and sustaining public educational funding, and at the same time, a junction of meaningful and real property tax relief for those that live paycheck to paycheck and live within a fixed income and difficult decisions are made on a daily basis in this community. I can remember one year ago today, the line in the sand drawn by seriously concerned residents of witnessing another budget that would do potential harm to our blue-collar, low-medium-income workers. Elderly and retirees struggling simply to stay within their own homes, for sale signs still litter every street in this community. I took an oath of office to try and see those come down. Knocking on doors and having avid discussions of struggles in living rooms, kitchen tables, and on doorsteps depicted to me the real, true resident that are and continue to be the majority, those that live within a very real world of limited finances and ask the grace of God to get them through yet another day. I identify with those residents, and I will always be a champion for those residents. At the same time, we have a public educational system that is in need of an immediate overhaul to put the emphasis and onus on the classroom and its teachers, that sacrifice amongst all of them a humility and generosity of all the right characterizations. Funding within administrations that require now to be trim and lean must hit the floors of individual classrooms to assist those teachers that have had their backs against the wall for far too long. Efficiencies must be sought and identified. As enrollments decline, we must be aware of where we can get the most bang for our funding. The state of Maine needs to look at and solve via efficiencies some of these realities and provide relief to municipalities that are literally skating on edge and endangering some of their own essential services. Property revaluations, when they happened last year, came like home invasions of the worst kind to some neighborhoods and in wards of this community, raised taxation to levels that were utterly shocking to most. The People's Council formed prior, kicked into action, and walked the streets to prevent a further tax mill rate increase based upon the severity of the conditions they saw not only on themselves, but in the masses of people that they talked to. Anger and frustrations flared with great intensity and passionate pioneers defended the working-class elderly and retiree. The tax shifted from commercial to residential, and real pain was contracted. A veto was made, overridden, an affidavit filed to suspend the budget. Councillors were fed a real significant dose of reality that day. Today, we are at a completely 180-degree turn, and I'm proud to be serving on this council in my third year on a compromised budget that every single one of us, and I think the mayor had it right when he said that we had these work sessions all amongst ourselves instead of a finance committee, and everybody was involved. Today, we can make really pleasant history here by passing a budget without the threat of a mayor veto. And this is a huge accomplishment on both sides of the aisle. And I, I think I just want to thank you folks for what you've done and what we have been able to do, and thank you for listening.
I believe you want to speak next.
Yes, I would like to echo the comments of my colleagues. This is my first budget system, and I entered it with no small degree of trepidation. I'm sure, having witnessed from afar the previous year's budget contention, I was wondering what I was getting myself into, but I think that we have all worked together very well, very hard, through many surprises. I think we made a wise decision to postpone this vote until we could actually have the numbers that we could really work with and grapple with. There are, as Counselor Champagne said, many things that we each wish could be a little different in this budget, and I think that means that we've done the best we can to make everybody a little unhappy, but a compromise that we can all live with. I share Counselor Mayhew's deep concern for the residents of this city who are struggling. But I also want to say that as part of our charge is to think about the ways that we can judiciously invest in the parts of our city to lay the foundation and continue the really exciting growth that we have here, and I think that this budget balances those concerns really well. So I perhaps self-servingly commend us all for that work that we've done.
Any other comments from the council?
To be clear, the original budget does not cut any educators, right? No teachers are being cut with the original budget.
The schools are getting more money than they got last year.
It includes a half-time, a part-time code officer along with a full-time code officer.
And we are, thanks to several counselors up here, finally getting additional code enforcement for the city of Waterville, which is a big deal.
Halftime.
Halftime.
Baby steps.
Okay, so I guess we will open this up to public commentary. We will ask that you come to the podium, state your name and where you live. And I do just want to say, when I was out back earlier, I was just having a brief conversation with our new solar partner, Guizos, and one of the things he said was, "You have an amazing community." Everybody in there was smiling, I just heard all kinds of positive things, and I hope that whether you are for or against this budget, we can come and speak in that spirit, because that's what our outside investor just saw and commented on to me. And I think it's a profound statement, and so I hope that is the spirit that we will continue to speak with, and I will recognize you.
I'll do my best. Paula Remen again from Ward 7, and I will do the three minutes as best I can, I know that's a big deal now. I've been spending about two years coming to meetings, and the reason why I wanted to do that is because I knew Gary and I would be moving back to the community and back into the South End, and learning a lot by listening to people, talking with professionals, talking with city council members and the mayor and city managers, and hearing what we've been talking about. And there were two things that seemed to be prevalent every time we were out in the hallway or among us in different settings, and it was the mil rate in the school, and it was the monies that was being used, and I felt that there was some discrepancies, and maybe even a lot of discrepancies. So for myself, I thought, I've got to start checking into that, and I've got to start calling local communities to find out how we pair with them, and what our mil rate does look like as compared to them. So I went online, and I got a list of the 2015 mil rates for the state of Maine, of course, and I'm handing out, or having the young ladies hang those, hand those out to you tonight. And so what I ended up doing is saying, "Okay, that, that looks okay," and there's the outliers, the low and the high, and then in the middle, and I wanted to know where we stood when it came to our mil rate here in Waterville. So as you're getting these papers, I believe they're stapled together, if you turn the page, you'll see that a graph was formed, and that's something that one of the young ladies did, Carolyn was my graph girl. And if you look at it real well, you'll see that, if you just look at it as a number line, you'll see that Waterville is to left of center, which means that we don't have, yes?
And I just, just as a point of order, left of center to the towns that you selected from the entire state?
Right, right. No, it's not the state.
Okay.
Because there would be no point to that, I thought. I wanted to concentrate on the communities that abutted us, so I looked at Fairfield, Winslow, Sidney, and Oakland. And I also looked at up north, because I could see with, when you go to East Millinocket, they're paying a 34.51 mil rate, and that's pretty crazy. On the other hand, Sidney's doing 11.32. So I thought, okay, why is that? Why is it so low over there? Because I don't know a whole lot about how cities run, and I, you know, what they have and what they don't have. So if you turn to the next page, what I did was, I just created a table, a very simple table, actually, you have to go two pages. The next page just shows you where we got the information, which is online for anybody to do. It's called the estimated full-value tax rates. So if you go to the next page, what I did is I just created a very simple table, and I put our city and towns, and again, you'll see that it's just the ones that abut us, Waterville, Sidney, Fairfield, Oakland, and Winslow, and the 2010 census, because I thought it was important to know how many people there are in each community, and then the kind of fire department we have in comparison to them, the kind of police department, the parks and rec, and the public works, the library and the schools. And you can look at them all, but the one that concerned me the most, of course, because it's come up so much, were the schools. And if you look at what Waterville offers as a school department, and how much it has to share, it's sharing all of their... And again, you'll see that it's just the ones that abut us, Waterville, Sidney, Fairfield, Oakland, and Winslow, and the 2010 census, because I thought it was important to know how many people there are in each community. And then the kind of fire department we have in comparison to them, the kind of police department, the parks and rec, and the public works, the library and the schools. And you can look at them all, but the one that concerned me the most, of course, because it's come up so much, were the schools. And if you look at what Waterville offers as a school department and how much it has to share, it's sharing all of their administrators with two other school districts. That's a big deal. When you have to split people like that among two other school districts, that's just a big deal. And then they share the food service, they share the finance director, they share the facility director. We share a lot. If you look at our police department, we have a very...
Paula, I just want to give you, you've hit three minutes, so...
I'm at three minutes?
You're at three minutes.
Oh, no, start it over.
So, I'll let you finish your thought.
I'm using Carolyn. All right, all right. But I just wanted you to have that information because it's a very simple, very easygoing, very constituent kind of thing that we're looking at. The last page says, "Waterville is a good neighbor." And that came from somebody from one of the managers that I called in the town. And that was a big deal for me. And that should be something we put on the front page. Waterville is a good neighbor. And I want us all to hear that really, really well. Because I believe each and every one of you, in your own community, in your own street, you're a good neighbor. And I believe as a city, we're a good neighbor. And it came from outside looking in, that Waterville is a good neighbor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Reiser, Ward Two. I'm on the school board. I just want to make something really very, very clear. To vote on the green budget is to essentially leave the school board out of the process. School board did not vote on anything, did not vote on a budget until yesterday morning. So that's what the change was. So this leaves us out of the process.
Julian Payne, Ward Five. And it's a little bit like The Wizard of Oz, this has been going on forever, we're finally here, we get to meet Oz and it's a relief, too. So, and it felt like it would never end. We attended every budget meeting religiously and every council meeting for a year and a half. So we did make an effort to be informed and we learned a lot. And I know Mike appreciated us being there. We've had EduCare and COSPA students and strange and incredulous presentations. I'd like to thank Bob Hasi for his presentation to the residents, giving them additional tools to make informed decisions. I would personally thank every city department for the utmost professionalism they've shown throughout this whole process. I mean, I bumped into Chief Massey in the grocery store and LeBonton and many people and a handshake and hello, Mr. Payne. And I never felt any tension or animosity and they've really set the bar high for the city through this difficult process and it hasn't gone unnoticed. I urge the council to accept the original proposal. Everyone's worked very hard on it and I commend Steve Soule especially, Heshan, for his bipartisan deep look at the budget that has been obvious to all watching. He's done a fantastic job. And my counselor, Nick Champagne, I am biased, I will admit it, that attending the budget meetings, he really got into figures and labor costs, which was refreshing. And he's new, so next year he won't be as diligent. But I do reject the last minute to hijack the budget and what they're looking at is 0.13. So really, we should just move on, shake hands, and recognize the work the council's done to get to this point. We're a lot better off than we were this time last year. We really are. Last year was a totally different mess and we're within just a few numbers here. Last year, there was a last-minute attempt at $250,000 pushback there. And again, we really shouldn't be doing that because the city departments aren't. I don't see a police chief saying, "I want four fire trucks" yesterday or...
He doesn't want any fire trucks.
No, no, I mean, sorry, yeah. Well, he doesn't want any police cars. Well, I'm just thinking, if he ever comes to get me, I'd rather he came in a fire truck than a police car. So, but it's kind of throwing a spanner in the works at this point. You know, this is the best budget, all parties have come up with it. And I think we're standing pretty good. All over the state, people have been flat funding. Augusta saw only a 0.5 increase. You know, residents are at breaking point, there's many factors. I don't understand all the revenue sharing and issues like that. But this mess that we all came in as a community isn't one side or the other. It's many complicated factors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And actually, one of the things that we didn't really mention, before I forget, when we were really, we are in a tight budget and Colby College heard that and they actually have stepped forward and they're buying a police cruiser for the city. And it would be very neglectful of me not to recognize Colby College for stepping in to help out in that sense, because not all of our nonprofits are able to do that and we're very appreciative that they were able to step in to do that. Mayor?
Old mayor.
Always a mayor.
Yeah, Karen Hack, Ward Six. Ken, I commend you all for all of the work that has to go into this. I do understand how much it is, but I'm wondering what the difference in these two budgets is when it comes to the school request. What is that?
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
And I'm sure you're correcting me if I'm wrong, it was in the paper today, I believe it's two ed tech positions and $15,000 for security cameras.
For what? Security cameras? And the question was about whether teachers were cut? Was that, I heard somebody say, yes, there were? Or there are not?
Mr. Haley, can you just explain the, how the staffing? I certainly don't want to answer on behalf of the schools.
I didn't get a purple sheet, so may I have a minute to see what indeed you are really offering up? I guess what I'm understanding is that the .53 mill increase does not include the 75,000 that the Board of Education asked to put back into the budget?
That's correct.
Okay. If I may, and thank you for letting me stand in front of you again, it's an honor to be your superintendent. I look around this room and I see an awful lot of well-educated and very supportive people and it always gives me a lot of pride to represent you where I do, in all of the places that I go as superintendent of schools. And I wish you all well for what you do and your hard work that you do. Here is a situation, and I do have a list of cuts that I won't belabor by describing to all of you. My assistant, Mr. Tivatot, has the same list that he's going to hand out to the audience and because enough years I've got way down the table.
So Eric, can you also just let us know, just as a point of order, the percent increase of this budget in funding over last year's?
2.08%.
So this is a, so this is actually an increase over last year's budget?
2.08%, yes.
Great, thank you.
You'll see four different dates. The first two pages are the dates and cuts, the amount of cuts that the school department made from their original request. You'll notice that a big batch of them took place on the 3rd of April. And then on the 6th of April, at the bottom of that first page, you'll see that we had insurance savings from what we projected for a cost increase. And so on the right-hand side, you'll see a column that is a running total for our budget. Then you'll see that once we got the new state revenues in July, this July, on 7/13, my finance director and I went through again and looked and see, because now we had real numbers, and that's the other thing I wanted to thank this council for doing, and Winifred, you mentioned it earlier. I made the recommendation to all three councils that they wait and wait for the numbers before you try to make a budget work. And Waterville was the only one that listened to me. I shouldn't say that, they all listened to me. They didn't all heed my advice, they wanted to move ahead with their budgets. I think we're in a better place because we do know our numbers. So those are the adjustments that we made on 7/13. And then on Monday morning, the board held a meeting so that they could take a vote on the recommended 7/13 cuts. And I think Susan Reisacher was here earlier, was the one who said, "I want to know what it is that's causing so much stress on our staff." Because there is a lot of stress on our staff. We're a much smaller staff than we have now, the problems are much different than they were 20 years ago. And so there were several administrators, including myself, that talked about what those issues are that are causing stress on our staff and burning our staff out. And that came up in the educational forum that we had this winter, is that we're burning people out of the school system because we're asking people to do so much more with so many less hands on deck. And one of the things that came up, and this may sound kind of foolish, I mean, you might look at that $15,000 for security cameras at the high school and say, "How's that affect stress?" Well, it affects stress because the teachers were so concerned about some of the behaviors that were going on in the hallway that they started giving up their plan periods to go out into the hallway and sit so they could monitor hallways. That's not an effective use of our teachers. We want them in the classrooms where they can be helping students when they're available or planning the next lesson. And when you think about it, 15,000 is a very small amount of money to ensure that we have 100% view on what's going on in our hallway. And I can tell you from having a school, Winslow High School, that does have hallway security cameras, we have solved an awful lot of dilemmas and prevented an awful lot by virtue of everybody knowing that your behaviors are being washed 100% of the time and can be, and are recorded. So that's a small amount, I think, in order to provide teachers some stress relief. The other thing that came up, and it came up from two different buildings, is I'm really stressed about the fact that I don't know what's coming, that we have a lot of special needs childrens. A lot of them need one-on-ones. And I'm really stressed that that family moves in next week, I don't have a person for them. Well, lo and behold, what are you supposed to happen this morning? As I stand here and witness, this is the truth. I have a meeting with my George Mitchell School principal, my assistant special ed director, and my assistant principal at the Mitchell School. We have three children that we have no ed tech for that need one-on-ones. Three. The board saw fit to give the $60,000, which is if they don't take, both don't take insurance, I can buy two with $60,000. So there's your 75. I've already got more than that in requests today that I'm going to have to do. I don't have a choice. Federal law states I need to have these people covered because it's in their IEP. So I'm already behind the eight ball and if we don't get the 75,000, I'm even that further behind the eight ball.
Mr. Haley, I just have a question. In regards to the original budget proposal and in regards to cuts, why was an officer cut if safety was the utmost concern at the high school? Why was an officer cut from a position of the school budget? And why are we now considering a security system on top of that?
Well, your school resource officer doesn't necessarily monitor hallways, that's not what they do. They may if they happen to be there.
I would imagine that they would have a quicker impact on a situation, being there versus a camera recording.
No, I wouldn't agree with that at all. I want that camera, because that's going to tell me exactly what happened and who was involved.
Some situation.
And a school resource officer would be, it would be hit or miss whether or not, no pun intended, whether or not they happen to be on the scene when that whatever is happened. So no, I wouldn't agree with that. I would say the cameras are going to be much more valuable to us as far as controlling hallway behavior.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a couple, another minute or so, right?
You do, you have about a minute and a half.
Okay. So my next question is, what would the difference on the mill rate difference be on somebody on a $100,000 home, which we don't have a lot of, but what would it be? How many cents are we talking about? Dollars? How many dollars?
Seventy-five thousand dollars is .1, then.
.1 mill. So I guess .1 mill. What is it going to be to put this back in, is what I'm asking?
It'd be about $100, right?
It would be about $10.
$10?
$10.
$10?
$10.
Right. $10 on a tax bill? I guess I would say I hope that you don't vote for this budget that's been recommended and that you vote for the purple budget.
Without arguing for either budget, I do want to just put out a commentary and this is, I'm actually trying to refrain and allow the council to have their debate on the budget without interjecting myself. But I do get a little bit concerned when we start to have people break things down in such a manner. I know last year, I was like, well, what is this, $10 a month, is it $20 a month? And I know, my wife's here in the front row. And I pay about $300 a month in property tax. And last year, my jump was about $60 a month in one year because of the revaluation. It would have been 100 had we not come back to the table and shaved it down. For us, in a single-income household of five children, that money is, and I don't make six figures, is impactful on our home budgets. And so I'm not arguing for or against, I guess I just don't want to minimize the impact that $10, $20, $30, and a lot of people do have houses worth more than that, has on people's families and their ability to provide for their families. And I just want to make sure we don't minimize that, because sometimes it's easy, but then what happens is every year, we say it's just this amount every year.
Well, I totally understand what you're saying, but I would also say that when people send their kids to school, they'd like to make sure that their kids are safe. And I think that as people, most of us, went to public school, have an obligation to make sure that young children have that same safe school hallway. So I would say generally, I agree with you, you can't break down every single thing in the budget to $10 here, $10 there, but you're voting on a budget that's either $10 or less than $10 on something that you just heard. We're going to have to provide whether or not there's money there. So that's, I think my three minutes just went up.
Hello, my name is Phil Bauf here, I'm from Ward Two. I just want to come and read this, something that I saw this morning, a post by the mayor. It said, this is, "There is a real opportunity to show the community that you are all in this together and that compromise isn't such a bad thing. We cannot expect that a community will heal its divisions if its leaders are unable to do the same." That sentence spoke volume to me. And when I come here today, you know, and I listen, debates over the budget, I can't help myself to think, you know, there was a process that took more than six months for us to get where we needed to be. And understandably, now, there's a possibility that, you know, there could be some things added to the budget. But taken away from a process that took so long and where people worked so hard to get there, and now coming at the end and saying, you know what, all this work that we did, we need to change it. I truly believe that that's not the right approach. I understand from the standpoint of the school, you know, safety is something that, you know, is important. I recently installed city cameras in my own house, I have four of them, it cost me about $100. And just looking at the numbers, I say, you know, there probably is a better way, you know, to achieve the goal as far as it comes, when it comes to security. I'm not an expert in quotes or whatever, I just want to give my two cents as far as that goes. But I really believe that that process that took place, you know, is something that we really respect because like the mayor said, there's always going to be some things that come in on the back end. But when we spend so much time working together, we want to make sure that, you know, that process is something that we continue to follow so that we don't find ourselves in the same position in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles Baris, I'm in Ward Four. And just, I know, Mr. Mayor, you've indicated you don't like to break it down into dollars and cents. I think it's important.
Or if you do, then I think we just need to actually take, like, no, I'm saying we shouldn't minimize the impact of those dollars and cents.
I understand that. But you're talking about a change between the green and the purple. If you own a $300,000 house, it's going to be a $30 a year difference. Isn't a $30 a year difference worth it for the safety of our children? And so the kids that have developmental disabilities have someone to work with them. I mean, my kids are in public schools, okay? I know, and I want to keep them there. But I also want to know that they're going to go to a school where the kids that need special needs help get that help. And I don't think it's a lot to ask, I think it's politics, pure and simple. If we're going to get hung up over .01%, it's really astounding to me. I would suggest that the councilors vote no on the green budget and I'd like to hear somebody move to adopt the purple budget. It's politics, that's all it is.
Hello, Gary May, Ward Five. I'd like to thank Chairman Sol for his hard work on the budget. Definitely an asset to the city of Waterville and the mayor as well, and some of you councilors. In the recent article in Morning Sentinel, I'd like to make a correction, and, and this was, this quote was said by a school board member, Pamela Trindwood. She said that in the past, fifty percent of tax dollars went to the municipality and fifty percent went to the schools. Well, she's only partially correct. Year ending, fiscal year ending nineteen ninety-seven, it was about fifty-fifty. Schools in ninety-seven was forty-nine point six percent, and the city was fifty point four, so the schools were slightly on. Fiscal year ending two thousand and seventeen, the school portion of the city budget had actually gone up to fifty-four point six percent, and the city portion went down to forty-five point four percent. And I have these sheets available, and the information is right from the city budget, so it's indisputable. So we, we are definitely properly funding our schools. And again, we're spending more for our schools than we were back in ninety-seven. And when you look at that and compare that to our demographics, I think we need to be cognizant that according to the census, about twenty-five percent of Waterville residents make less than fifteen thousand dollars a year. Forty-one percent of Waterville residents make under twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So yes, that extra ten dollars a month is a lot of money to these people, and we need to be.
Excuse me, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. And fifty percent of Waterville residents make under thirty-five thousand dollars, and sixty-six percent make under fifty thousand. So yes, that is a lot of money to these people, and we are properly funding our schools. And if you'd like, I have the information all printed, and I know you people have worked very hard, and I'd like you to pass the first budget that you had agreed on, and that Mr. Haley had given his handshake agreement, as it is my understanding. Thank you.
And one thing I guess that should just be brought up, and because this has been a good process, and it really shouldn't be sour, there are two readings on this budget. I would recommend to the council that you pass the point five-three, but I also think you also have another week to work with the school and work amongst yourselves to either come up with half of that or to split, or to find out where that money comes from. Because there are other, I, I don't think we're going to allocate those funds tonight. Thank you, Mr. Haley. I don't think we're going to allocate those funds tonight. I think it can still be done at the point five-three mil rate. But I don't, I, I don't think, numbers we got this morning, we can, we can properly then go back and look at where they changed, so I think you can pass that budget tonight and then take the next week. If there are concerns about the need for additional resources to the school, to speak among yourselves and speak to Mr. Haley and try to figure out how that would work. Chairman.
I just want to mention to the people, like, you know, please don't, I mean, I have to respectfully disagree with some of you that are saying things, like, if, if your child has special needs and is enrolled in the Waterville schools, please don't think that they're going to, like, not give them the services they need. I mean, they're going to get those services. I mean, let's not paint a picture that, you know, if, if three new kids come into the school that they're not going to get the services. They're going to get those services. Another thing is, I worked in a school for many, many years that had cameras, and cameras, I would much rather have the school resource officer that we put back in than cameras, because cameras don't stop something, they just record it, okay? I mean, like, when I was in the school that I was in, it didn't stop the kid from punching the other kid, but it did record it, okay? So I would much rather have the school resource officer, so it's just something to think about.
Well, I think that's, that is kind of my point, and I think that it's room to discuss it. I would, and I will go to you, I promise.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment in regards to keep hearing people, as the mayor suggested, minimizing an increase in taxes. You have to understand, I went door-to-door last November, Ward Five, average age of voter is sixty-six years old. This means that we have a number of, of single homeowners living in their own homes, operating on fixed incomes. Many of those folks were on the fringe last year with the revaluation, even with a mil rate decrease. Going up even the slightest bit would make the biggest difference to them. And I just want to point that out. There are a number of people that I have gone to. You can go door-to-door, and if you want, you can set up a time with me, and we can go and discuss this with some of these residents, and I'd be more than willing to do so.
And I would just add to that, that there are programs that exist in the state of Maine to assist elderly homeowners with taxes, and they're underused. And I'm, I'm not advocating for a mil rate increase, I'm just saying that, that in addition to talking to them about issues, we need to be talking to them about those resources because they aren't used to the extent that they should be, and it can make a huge difference. It could be sixty percent of your taxes covered by those, those benefits, so, and they're not being used to the extent that they should be in Waterville.
And, and I just want to point out again, this doesn't, this isn't either or. This isn't you care about our schools or you only care about taxes. Everyone up here came to the table and cared about both of those things. And so as we discuss, we should not be taking the approach that, and we're, we're enemies in here and that we can do it. I think it can be worked out. I don't think we can vote on numbers we got this morning. And this is why I said I will certainly give you the floor, so thank you for waiting.
Thank you. Again, Susan Reiser, Ward Two, School Board. I just want to say, I really, I want to, I have total respect and quite a lot of respect for the hard work and the compromise. I know how hard compromise can be. I'm a Democrat, I'm married to a Republican. It's very hard. You know, but I, I do want to make sure that we're keeping in mind that it's not just about sort of dollars here or there. You all worked, you've worked hard, the school board has worked hard too, and I just want to make sure that the school board's work is respected here. We had a very productive conversation yesterday morning, right? We have not had a lot of conversation about the budget. We were waiting until we got numbers before we had a substantive conversation. And so that's what we did yesterday. And we did, there were some concerns raised about some of the things that had been cut, and we felt it was important to put those things back in. So this isn't just about sort of, you know, dollar here, dollar there, and what that means. It's also about what the school board is doing, and I think we would like to see our work and our deliberations being respected.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I'm Emmanuel Perisir from Ward Two, and I, I do commend the, the work that you guys have done. Like, I haven't been to every meeting, and I know how hard it is to reach a compromise. I also just want to say that I respect the work that the school board has done, and I don't think that's excluding what you've done. I don't think there's a conflict between the two, and it's a kind of a shame that it just came up at the last minute. That seems, you know, like it's something that can create conflict because it's, the timing isn't very good. So just based on the valuation of my house, like, I think it'd be about twelve bucks, that I would pay extra. I'm a senior citizen now, and so I just, I'm willing to pay that because I trust what the school board says they need. I'm not going to rethink their position on it. And I don't know if this is appropriate or not to ask, like, how many people in the room would be willing to say that they'd be willing to pay that increase based on what the valuation of their house? Is that a legitimate question to ask the group?
I don't think that would be in order of the meeting.
Okay, well anyhow, so maybe think silently about whether you would be willing to do that or not? And I just wanted to say, yeah, I, I, my child goes to school here, I really appreciate the work, and, and it is tough. And I, the other point was that if we don't fund what Eric needs, and he's got more needs coming in, we're just kind of kicking the can down the road. So this is an opportunity not to come back here next year with an even bigger problem on our, on our hands, so.
And I guess I'm just asking the council, and I appreciate that, thank you, and that was a good point, that it is not either or. I'm just asking that the council not vote on these individual items, X, I think we can pass it, and you can work out how it works out between now and the next vote.
So could I ask for a point of clarification?
Certainly.
So, because this is the first time I've ever done this. So in the, in the week that we have ahead, we could, in other words, look in other areas of the budget to potentially find that seventy-five thousand dollars. Is that what we're talking about?
Correct, or you could find part of it. I mean, I think, I think in the spirit of the work we've been doing, I think that's, yeah.
I think, I think that's possible, too.
Yeah.
I'd just like to clarify a couple of things. First of all, Eric Haley made no agreement on what numbers I submitted down here for your review last week. Eric Haley has no authority to make an agreement on a budget. Eric Haley serves the Board of Education. The Board of Education's first opportunity to look at my recommendations was Monday morning, so that is not the last minute. That's the only opportunity they had to look at the recommended, recommendations that I had made on seven thirteen. We had a moving target as far as when this meeting would take place. We kept changing our board meeting so that we would be ready to act on our budget as soon as we got state numbers. So it was a moving target. We started originally with the twenty-seventh of July for our meeting, then we moved it up to the ninth, and then we moved it back off because we didn't get state numbers. So I don't think it's fair to say that the board did this at the last minute. This was the normal process that we've always used, except with this late in the, in the year.
I'm saying it's difficult for us without any prep time with all the, because we've been working on meat and potatoes scenarios for months, but even without knowing the numbers and plugging in fake ones and trying to get ready, I'm merely.
I understand that comment now.
You know, and I don't, I think what's unfortunate is that rather than passing a budget and finding it and just working through this, we're acting as if we have to pick and choose whether these things are going to get paid for today.
I understand that completely.
And this has been a positive process, and I certainly hate to see the council's work criticized when it is still yet done, and we still have another week to go.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Lebec, Ward Four. I just, in the vein of keeping things accurate, and that's important to me, there were several comments made, and some maybe anecdotally, but just for the record, going to the U.S. Census website and getting their numbers for two thousand and fifteen, which are the most recent numbers that they have on the website, the inflation-adjusted numbers for head of household and family income are different. And that's because people who live in a, in a situation where there may be one primary earner, but there are children involved, they may file head of household, there may be other reasons why someone would file head of household versus as a family, for instance, with two earners. So those numbers break down this way for Waterville, and these are inflation-adjusted numbers. Again, these are for two thousand and fifteen, which is the most recent data. So households in Waterville amount to sixty-seven hundred and sixty-four in total. Their median income is thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Their mean income is fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars. For those of you who may not understand median, mean, the median income number is the number at which fifty percent of households make less than that number and fifty percent make more. The median, sorry, the mean is the average, okay? So all, all households averaged out. So that's the household income. The family income, again, where you usually have two earners, okay? Those numbers break down this way. The median income in Waterville, two thousand and fifteen, inflation-adjusted, fifty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight. The mean, or average, seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-four. When you look at individuals, I looked at, interestingly enough, male and female. I do have a teenage daughter, so this is of interest. So the median earnings of an individual male in this town are thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars a year, and for a female, it's thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-four. I don't bring these up to argue points. I'm bringing them up mainly to just let people know that, that anecdotal evidence presented to you is worth researching. I was here three weeks ago, and I heard these numbers presented about fifteen thousand dollar incomes and that the average was, you know, average household was thirty thousand, and it prompted me to go and look. And those numbers just don't bear out, to tell you the truth. So before you, you make a judgment or a, a decision, I would suggest that you make sure you have the research done, and so everything is accurate. Also of note, just, the average age in Waterville is thirty-eight and change.
Just talking about my ward.
Thanks, yeah, no, absolutely.
Ever been a voter?
Sure, sure, and I, I don't, I actually walked your ward the other day collecting signatures, and certainly anecdotally, I can agree that there are certainly many, many elderly folks in your ward, but, but there are also lots of young folks around, too. So just so you know. Thank you.
Uri, I, sorry, I, this kind woman has been waiting, and I've been watching.
Hi, Lisa Evans, Ward Six. Thank you. I get a little nervous about, well, let's just go with the niceness of how we're at this point with the budget and compromise and kumbaya, and we're just going to vote for this, and we don't really need to hash out the line items at the moment. I'm, that concerns me because the difference in the two-colored budgets is seventy-five thousand dollars. The higher budget is going to allow for security cameras, and I think two additional ed techs in the school district, that I commend a school board member for asking the administrators across the board in Waterville, what freaks you out the most? What is going to help you the most day-to-day to do your job? The security resource officer is not in the high school five days a week. He is shared among the schools. So there is a big chunk of time when shenanigans are going on. I have children in the high school, they don't do the shenanigans, but I know things are happening that security cameras will be able to make a hu, much bigger difference than a shared resource officer. So I, that seventy-five thousand dollars to me, to get those ed techs and the security cameras, is important. So if you're saying, let's just go with, I think my budget would be the purple, let's just vote on the green, then what happens to those?
So I think, I think what I was trying to describe was not that those things just go away. I think it's more respecting how much time we've had to hash out ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars, and really trying to build a two-to-three-year picture. In doing that, it's, it's, if we're going to fund those things, A, maybe we don't make the other cuts, maybe we do, but we should have time to process that and to look at it, because I don't think anyone here could sit here tonight. It would, I think it would be an injustice against the process to say, well, let's just scratch that extra seventy-five now. So it was certainly not to say, to hell with those things. It was, if we're going to do those things, let's take a second look and see how that fits into the overall picture, to respect the entire process.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Uri Lessing, Ward Three. I was, I was one accused of that elaborate conspiracy. I'm, I'm not going to offer any advice to the council, and then I, I have a lot of trust in, in our council, and I appreciate our council. I will say that when I moved here, I took a ten thousand dollar pay cut, essentially, that I purchased my own teacher's chair. I'm not doing it for the money, and there are no teachers in Waterville doing it for the money. We do it because we love this city. We love teaching here. We love being a part of it. So just keep that in mind.
Counselor, no.
That's all I want to say, just keep that in mind. The teachers here are not teaching for the money. They're not, they're not, we're not trying to work the system to gain more money. We are doing this because we love your children, and we love being a part of their lives, and we love watching the city grow as they become more and more responsible, and they make this city a better place. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Hallen. I'm in Ward Four, and up until very recently, I'd been working in different public high schools, so I had a bird's eye view of a couple of the things that came up here today. One was the resource officer. I've been so lucky to work in schools that have a resource officer. As a guidance counselor, a resource, resource officer can be a really good friend on lots of different levels and in lots of different ways. However, when they're in the gym, they can't be in the cafeteria, and when they're upstairs, they can't be in the front lobby. There's only one place for them to be at any given time. I can tell you that my other school did have a security camera system, which is really helpful on a lot of levels, because when there was a bomb threat in my high school, we can narrow down who the student was by using the security cameras, because it would record the com- because it would record the comings and goings in all the different bathrooms. Same thing when horrible things are written in different areas, we can narrow it down. Same things when students have allegations of bullying each other in the hallways. We can take a look at the tapes and see what has actually transpired, make our job a little bit easier. So the recording system does have a really important role for me as a, as a school employee, and also just trying to work with students and the resource officer to try to make kids safer. About the special education students, I just have to say that they are just, they're frequently not seen. We don't see them on a football team. Maybe they're in a concert once in a while. But these could be kids who are severely autistic, who need help eating, who need help using the bathroom. And their duties, the teachers' duties, they can't be split in that way. So if you have two students or three students with serious needs, and their IEP is designed in such a way that they need to be safe to have another responsible adult there, those are kinds of responsibilities that just can't be split based on convenience. So those students, they just, I think they do need a stronger voice, and they certainly, if it's in their IEP, they really do need that extra help. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we are probably ready for a vote. I will allow one more comment, and then we will close debate.
Eric Thomas, Ward Seven. You know, certainly as a former member of the council, I understand all the work that goes into putting the budget together. And compromise is important, and I like to hear those words, and the fact that people are working together to come up with a budget. I think the conversations that I've been having recently with my 20- and 30-something-year-old friends who are either just starting to have kids, or their kids are just becoming of school age, they're concerned because whether it's true or not, there's a perception that the schools are under attack. And they're considering moving out of town for that reason because the most important thing to them is the education of their children. And that's why they make decisions about where they live. It's certainly one of the things they consider, not necessarily just what the tax rate is. And it's a slippery slope if we start driving those people out of town because that is just going to make the problem worse. The long-term solution is for us to attract and retain those people in our town because that is what will broaden our tax base and bring more entrepreneurship and, you know, increase activity in town. And so I just think there's more things to consider. And you have to consider, I understand sometimes things play out in the newspaper differently than what the reality is of the conversations that are happening, you know, one-on-one with councilors and the mayor. But you have to remember the perception that it creates. And so it's just something to consider, you know, as you move forward and make a decision about what is important to us as a community.
And Eric, I'll close by saying, while some of what you say is true, I also speak to a lot of middle-aged, blue-collar residents of the city who have told me, "We will move." This isn't anecdotal. And I can tell you, last year, when my tax bill went up, and I like to use myself as an example, I used to not, but I think it's important, went up, you could roll your eyes, but it's a truth. My wife is here. She will attest. I have five children. $60 a month is a pair of sneakers that I might now have to wait to buy. $60 a month is a costume for a play that my son might want to be in. $60 a month matters to a lot of families. And there are families, so while what you say is true, we all believe in strong schools. That's why I went into the schools. That's why we've been on the phone with Mr. Haley. Unfortunately, there has been an attack on those of us trying to find the balance that if you question the budget and want to talk about taxpayers, you must hate the schools. And that is the most false, ridiculous statement I've ever heard. So while we should not sacrifice our schools on the altar of tax cuts, this isn't a tax cut. This is a tax increase. And I think we've worked hard, and we are working to progressively increase and invest in our schools. And as Ms. Madigan is here tonight, she'll attest to the fact that next year, our schools are going to get an even bigger subsidy from the state. And I know that we had Sarah Sylvester speak to the fact that the school does need to have a longer-term plan of how to grow some of those things slowly. It is a balance, and it is an either/or. You have to look out for both. And it's just important to do that, to say, and those who say that you either have to be for one or the other are really divisive. Argumentative. Yes, okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. We will be voting on the budget that is on the floor. All those in favor?
We're voting on the green budget.
Yes. All those in favor? unanimous. Thank you. We'll give votes a moment to clear. We have one more item on the agenda, right?
Oh, yeah, we have one more. Oh, man.
Move to postpone ordinance, definitely.
Okay.
Move to postpone ordinance, 118, 2017, definitely.
Second. All in favor?
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn.